Counsel meeting. I need a motion to suspend the rules.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Tisdale.
Second.
Second by Mr. Creel. Any discussion? All in favor? Those opposed? Motion carries if the clerk would read the revision.
To the policy agenda, we're adding 4AA ordinance to amend section 9122A of the Code of Ordinances pertaining to garbage collection and disposal fees.
Thank you. I need a motion to accept the agenda as amended.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Tisdale.
Second.
Second by Mr. Creel. Discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Mayor's report?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And Mr. Councilman. Council President, thank you. Welcome, everybody. I think this is, uh, we got some folks from our postal office here, and it's a great pleasure. We're gonna be celebrating the 250th year of the postal service. So if you, someone, if you, you know, all the people come on up and let me read this proclamation. 250 years, it's a long time, right? So whereas the United States Postal Service has played a significant role in historical development of the United States of America, from the establishment of roads, railways, airlines, and remains a vital part of the fabric building, binding together the people of this nation. Whereas under universal service obligation, the United States Postal Service ensures that all people, regardless who they are or where they live, have the democratic right to equal and affordable mail service, currently serving 169 million addresses consistent over the six and often seven days a week. The postal service remains a vital source of communications, financial transactions, private and secure correspondence, mail audit medications, mail-in voting, e-commerce packages, and emerging opportunities for new and expanded services, all while being owned by the people and serving as the national treasure of and by for the people. Now, whereas for 250 years, the United States Postal Service has faithfully served the city of Biloxi through the delivery of the B News monthly, utility bills, essential government communications, and personal correspondence. And the city of Biloxi gratefully recognizes, honors, and salutes the dedication of postal workers while affirming its support for a robust and thriving public postal service for generations to come. Now, congratulations on our anniversary, United States Postal Service 250th anniversary. Congratulations. Great. Thank you so much. Yeah, I guess this is mine. And I think that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mayor. Move on to council reports. Mr. Gray.
Yeah, just a few things. The Trump cook-off was really good. Great weather with the boat and RV shows. Jamie Lee, you out there? Quick question. The signs for O'Reilly Park and Hornsby Park, is any idea when they'll be done?
The signs for the parks themselves?
Yeah.
I'm working with the mayor right now on some designs that we're gonna use citywide for our parks, and as soon as we can get that design complete, we're gonna go to the parks that need replacing and get those signs replaced at those facilities and/or parks.
Okay. Did we ever, ever get the other quote back for point cadet playground equipment?
No, sir, not yet.
Okay.
Not yet, no, sir.
That's all. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Marshall. I'm sorry, what was that?
Come back to me.
Come back to you, okay. Mr. Nail?
Uh, yeah. What about the splash pads at Hiller Park? Did we ever hear anything on them lately?
In the county.
It's kinda late in the year.
Splash pads on, you know, I think the county was gonna help us with that.
I see the gravel and the concrete still sitting there a little bit.
Right. The county was helping us with it, kinda figuring out we had a major leak underneath that splash pad, and it's kind of in the same situation with the one at the point. We're looking at what we need to do to repair it, whether we need to come back with some additional fixtures or just remove the damaged ones, and our goal would be to have that operational next summer again.
It's not an easy fix just to get it going for a little while?
You know, it would be just eliminating the structures that wouldn't work, but, you know, that's a big part of the splash pad, the ones that we did have to remove, so it's kinda looking at options and what would be financially the best option to get those replaced.
And what about the painting of the pavilion at the end? It looks like it's ready to be painted.
It is, and I think once the cooler weather gets here, we get a, you know, a little break in the grass cut, and it'll give us a little more time to free up to get that, get that done in-house.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Yes, sir.
And Broadwater property, I think, I think they told us a lie. They said they were gonna start cleaning it up, and they left.
Yeah. I, I, you know, what they've done and what they have not done, but I'll get a little bit more definition for the next.
Yeah. I wouldn't mind getting a meeting with that guy and walking around out there and showing him some stuff he's missing.
Let's do that, yeah, definitely.
All right, all right, thank you. That's it.
Thank you, Councilman. Mr. Creel.
Uh, real quick, Jamie, just real, no need to get out, but thank you and your staff for making that dog park what it is today. We had an event out there this weekend with Tired Dog Rescue, hosted an adoption event, actually adopted, I think it was six dogs out there, and rave reviews on people that haven't been there over the years to get there now. They love the progress, love the equipment. Actually had a lady from Mobile bring her pet over and actually used the Agility equipment and ran, ran the dog through the equipment and was very impressed, so appreciate that, which you do out there, you and your crew, so that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tisdale.
Yes, I wanna thank those members of the administration, Mayor Gillich, CAO Rick Weaver, John Miller, Jamie Lee, Kristy Labata, Walt, Walt Rhode, Rhodey, and I wanna thank the council members, Mr. Gray, Mr. Marshall, Mr. Nail, Mr. Creel, Mr. Shoemaker. We missed you, Mr. Glavine.
I missed you too.
For, uh...
That didn't sound sincere.
For attending my award meeting, and we had about 70 souls there, and there was a couple there who videotaped that meeting, and at some point, it'll, I'll put it online at my website for those of you who missed it. It was very informative, and this rarely happens, but occasionally, and last night there were several folks who came up, said it was a very good meeting, so thank you to the administration, and thank you from my colleagues for showing up and support. That concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tisdale. Mr. Shoemaker?
Just a couple of things. You know, I've been known to mention these a few times in past meetings, but drainage and ditches, I've continued to get calls. I know Mr. Weaver and I have discussed this last night, so I know hopefully some repairs and some are coming soon, I hope. And then I have to leave it with this grass. I've gotten multiple, and I'm being honest when I say that, multiple calls today about grass and wool market. Same issue last year. Hopefully, we can work something out because it is an everyday affair, and I know we discussed that, Mr. Weaver, last night, and I showed you some pictures, but hopefully, I've been told we're short on some workers with Public Works, and maybe that's the truth, but hopefully we can do something because it's, it's, it's an everyday, everyday issue for me. Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Shoemaker. Mr. Marshall, coming back to you?
Uh, for expediency, please. For expediency, I'm gonna hold everything. I'm, I'm good. Don't come in.
All right. We'll move on to the citizens' comments. What? No, I have, no, I have nothing, no report. Move on to citizens' comments. We have a total of a lot of time, 45 minutes. When you're, raise your hand to be recognized. When you're recognized, come up to the front, sign in at the, at the desk here, there's a piece of paper, your name and your address, and state it clearly so the clerk can record it. So we'll start on my left, your right. Raise your hand, Mr. Sevastro.
Hey, how's everyone doing? I wanted to be nice and say a few things. Some of yous, if you get a chance, drive around our neighborhood, the greater Biloxi subdivision, see how many people have broken ground, how many empty lots have been sold, how many homes that were sitting are being re-modaled. We just had a gentleman remodel a home, and a couple moved from another state to take jobs working as professors in college. That area was a drug area. Amazing what you can accomplish together. So many people, thank, but particularly, I wanted to thank Chief, Assistant Chief Chris. Really done a lot to try and communicate between the neighbors and the officers. They've all done a good job. Somehow or another, they're doing their best. It seems a lot better. Obviously, the Broadwater property's gonna keep people coming in, but it's so much better, and now, you know, we're running into situations where landlords are starting to say, oh, wait, I can get a lot, the house, and then tenants have been there forever. They're not gonna pay 600 a month anymore, so we're starting to run into other problems, but I wanted to be polite and say it can happen. We can do things together. We can really, like, it's really starting to come together. And, you know, Tara did a lot of work, you guys, Dixie did a lot of work, Mike's trying to stay there, and just, I know you guys have other problems with the budget, and just, my own opinion, just try not to be stubborn, try and let outside people have voices. There's a lot of people who wanna volunteer to help, not necessarily picking up litter, but I was in the Citizens Academy, we had lawyers and accountants who wanted to kick in for a day or two and do stuff, so there's stuff we can do. Other than that, I wanted to say thanks, and if my opinion means anything, don't give Nikke Brothers another dime. They're the worst. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sevastro. Glad things are looking up. Anyone else on my left? Raise your hand, be recognized.
I am a homeowner of a house on Quarance Avenue, and I just wanted to make mention there's a real derelict house that is a complete, total mess. I think it's abandoned, and it's 204 Quarance. I do believe, I've called a couple times, I do believe it's on notice for the city, but it's really a mess. Wanted to report that.
Thank you. Anyone else, my left, your right? Raise your hand to be recognized if you wanna speak. We'll move on to my right, your left. Yes, sir.
George Collins, I live in West Biloxi. I would like to thank Mayor Gillich and the council for recognizing the post office's 250-year existence today. I believe we gave a little gratuity to the council, if you will, okay? And I would like to present the mayor the same thing.
All right. Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
All right, very good. Hey, thank you, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am. Please stand for life. Trust me.
I live at 609 Cop Street in Biloxi, directly behind me, and it's on the code enforcement as Q is property owned by Loxapam on 610 Howard Avenue. They have leased the property to an oyster man. It's got remnants of oyster cages. The rats have increased. I just paid $350 to have my house rat-proofed because of these cages that are located directly behind my house. I spent a considerable amount of money on my backyard so that I would have a nice area to enjoy. Now I have a wall of oyster cages directly behind my fence, so if there's any consideration you can give me on this account, I'd greatly appreciate it.
Thank you for your comments. Thank you. Anyone else on my right, your left? Anyone in the back of the room? Kevin, was that your hand up? You're scratching? Okay. All right. Citizens' comments is now closed. We'll move on to the policy agenda, starting with the resolutions.
Ordinance to amend section 9122A pertaining to garbage collection and disposal fees.
Chair, entertain a motion.
Make it.
Motion by Mr. Tisdale. Do I have a second?
I'll make that motion.
Second by Mr. Creel. Mr. Tisdale?
Yeah, this is, uh, this is 4AA. You're right, okay, so this is, uh, this is the garbage collection and disposal fees. Contractually, we're in a multi-year contract, which is arranged through the Harrison County Utility Authority, and this is an increase that's allowed within that contract. The city doesn't get any of this money other than to pay for the garbage collection based on that contract. Now, there's a slight administrative cost, I think, I don't know.
You have 13 cents on it.
13 cents, so anyway, other than that, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tisdale. Are there any other comments by the council? They're being done. Call for the question, all in favor?
First reading.
Council, please.
It's first reading.
Oh, I'm sorry. First reading, you're correct. Thank you.
First reading passed.
Now, we'll move on to the resolutions.
Resolution affixing the tax lottery for the calendar tax year of 2025 for the city of Biloxi in the Biloxi Public School District.
Chair, entertain a motion.
I made that, excuse me, I made that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Tisdale. We have a second?
Second. Second.
Second by Mr. Creel. Mr. Tisdale?
Yeah, at first glance, this budget is an eye-opener, but again, these, as I'm continually reminded every year at this time, a lot of the information we have is projected based on the current fiscal year, which doesn't end for another couple of weeks, and we won't know the figures until the books are closed on the, the month of September, which will be sometime in October, and then we'll come back for, I can't remember, conciliation, maybe would be a better way to put it. Usually, that's around somewhere between Thanksgiving and Christmas generally, where we actually close the books here in the financial office, and then we'll have an audit in the spring, and the cycle begins all over again.
You're on A, right?
I am on A. That's correct.
The taxes?
That's correct.
All right, go ahead. Continue.
Thank you. I'm sorry. As a retiree, I tend to talk too much, but having said that, and looking over the past years historically, we usually are very conservative in what we budget for revenue, and usually we don't, or we have rarely, if ever, expended more than we have budgeted for and generally less. So having said that, I'm comfortable with the budget we have. I don't think it's gonna get much better than what we have now.
We're on A. We're on A.
Right. Yeah, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Rosanna, Rosanna-danna. Sorry. Sorry.
That's okay, Mr. Tisdale. Do you still wanna, uh...
I'm embarrassed all the way to here.
No, don't be. Do you still wanna keep your motion for item?
Sure, I do.
Mr. Creel, you wanna keep your motion for item A?
Yes.
All right. Continue, Mr. Tisdale.
Thank you. There's no increase in city mileage. Thank you.
I concur.
All right. Any other comments on item A from the council? Call for the question, all in favor? Those opposed? Motion carries unanimous. The clerk would read item B.
Resolution to adopt the fiscal year 2025-2026 municipal budget.
Chair will entertain a motion.
Sure.
Thank you, Mr. Tisdale. Do I have a second? Do I have a second?
I'll make it.
Thank you, Mr. Shoemaker. Mr. Tisdale?
I don't have anything to add. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shoemaker.
I understand that the seven of us have a duty to approve and pass a budget for the fiscal year next year, and I know countless hours, stress, aggravation time has been in, put in by a lot of people in the administration, President Glavine, a lot of people, and apparently we have come to obviously a shortfall this year, but that being said, I think a lot has been done to rectify and get us moving forward. I personally have some, still have some reservations and some issues with some of the things that we've proposed. Some big ones, the hiring freeze. I think Public Works for certain, the police department for certain. I think we're, right now, we're advertising for positions, and we're freezing these positions, so it's obvious that we need people in these departments, and that's just two departments, not to diminish any other jobs or any other departments. That's just two that are constant issues daily that we need, and again, not to diminish any other jobs or any other departments. And I don't think that cutting these positions out, I mean, I know we can come back a month from now, six months from now, a week from, after October 1st, but I'm concerned that even if that's on the table, it may not happen, and we know we need these positions now because we're actively hiring for them. So I, I don't know what the solution is, unfortunately, but I can't, I just can't fathom the thought of not having police and some of these other positions that we need. Also, overtime, I don't know what, what's been cut out of overtime, but I'm confident that whatever we've included isn't gonna suffice for overtime, just for the police department, for the year. So we're gonna have to make up a shortfall at some point on overtime, just for the police department, and, and look, that's on us. A lot of that's events that the city's sponsoring, or putting on, excuse me, and we're hosting these events. We need them, I get it, we need it for the, for the money, the tax base, but at the same time, we're putting a huge burden on the police department because they're gonna have to do a lot more with a lot less, and they're already doing that. Public Works the same way. Well, Mr. Creel's office, I'm confident now that, I mean, you've got a lot going on daily, and now you're having to take off, if I'm not mistaken, take on, excuse me, Arbor's position that we're not gonna fill, and a historical director position, I think, so that's two more jobs that you're gonna have to take over. And again, I, I know we can't, I, I know we need to make cuts where we, where, where we can find ways to cut, I just don't know that cutting all the positions is the right thing. Director pay raises, I know we passed last year, the council approved director pay raises for last year. I don't believe any director's got pay raises last year, however, this year, there's some pay raises on the board, on the agenda for that, on the horizon, excuse me. Well, and I don't wanna take money from anybody, there, there was no, no discussion whatsoever about employee pay raises this year. We need to retain employees, we need to hire employees, and we're not doing a very good job of that because we're not giving pay raises and we're not taking care of the employees. And I think the optics of giving any director's pay raises and not giving employees pay raises when we're cutting the budget to nothing is not a good thing to do. I don't think we can do that and not have employees that we're trying to retain now, what they think of that. And I understand that, well, true, and the directors are some of the, not the highest paid, but some of the highest paid in the city, and I just think that maybe, that's another thing, maybe we don't give the directors, and I hate that because they're employees too, and everybody needs a pay raise. I just don't know if that's something we need to do right now, this year, is give the, and it wasn't all of them, it was only a few directors. So, I, I mean, I could go on with other things, but I, I just, for me, the, the police department, Public Works, the hiring freeze, the overtime pay, and the pay raises for the directors is my, not all my issues, but my bigger issues. So for that, I just won't be able to support it, but that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Shoemaker. Are there any other comments on this topic?
Yeah. You know, with us just coming into office, July the 1st, you know, we've been held up, given a budget that we don't know very much about, that we're trying to learn of what's going on, and, you know, I don't agree also with the budget being cut from the police department. I mean, we know that it's, police department is very, very, very important to the city. I mean, we can watch the news here, we can see the, the crime rate here in other cities we don't have. So, you know, maybe we need to look at, at our leasing, where we leasing buildings out to other people? Are we getting enough money? Are they fair pricing? You know, things like that should generate more income, revenue for the city. You know, maybe look at hiring a firm to go to each department and see where we can cut spending, you know, where we're overspending at, things like that. I think that something's gotta be done, and, you know, right or wrong, I mean, we still have to try to figure it out as a council. That's all I have.
All right. Thank you. Any other comments?
Allow me to speak slowly but surely. You don't mind? I don't know if I passed enough round, but can y'all pass it around so the mayor can also have a copy of it? And, uh, I, historically, I hate to be sitting up and, when I was sitting out in the audience and the city council discussing stuff, they got papers on, and I never had a copy, but back in the back, if you don't have one, I got a copy of some papers you guys can look at so you can see the numbers that I'm referring to. Okay, by now, you guys are probably familiar with me. I'm gonna always say the quiet part out loud because I believe in being truthful, straightforward. I am not a politician. I'm a citizen just like you. These are my tax dollars. All quarter of a billion of them. Let me say it again. All quarter of a billion with a B. We have, if you look on page one, of all of this United States, this whole country, in gaming revenue, Mississippi Gulf Coast is number five. Number five. I expect to be beat bested by Las Vegas. That's kinda obvious. Atlantic City, we don't have their population, they've been in the game for a long time. Greater Chicago, yeah, look at, that's, it didn't say Chicago, it said Greater Chicago. That's a big area, a lot of different cities. Washington, DC, and Baltimore combined, big area. Mississippi Gulf Coast, let's break it down. On the Mississippi Gulf Coast, we receive $1.58 billion in revenue through our casinos. The blessed city, Biloxi, did not receive it now. The casinos bought into their pocket, their pockets. $1.09 billion with a B. Of that, you would see that, the city of Biloxi in itself, I believe the number is like 70 or 80% of that came through us, or more, our casinos, because we have eight casinos looking at us every day. They're well-run, they send planes out, ships out, boats out, whatever they gotta do to go out and get people, to bring people through their doors. Whatever they gotta do to sell what they sell, they do it, they market it, and they sell it. They do a very good job. If you look at the revenue from the casinos, at the bottom, I'm only using 2024, we're not through with 2025 yet, but it shows you from 2024. But it shows you from 2003 always to 2024 to the right-hand corner under the green. It shows you what we have received from gaining tax revenue. In other words, we taxing the money they win. We receive 24,179,015 dollars in our pockets. No other city on the Gulf Coast gets that much money, free money. We don't, we like to try to brag about the casinos, but don't anybody on this table or that table over there operate those casinos. We don't do that. They have their own people, they out there getting their own money, they have their own sales teams, they do everything themselves. We are purely reaping the rewards of their fruits and efforts. And I praise God for them, I thank God because if by chance you remove their revenue, we would have nothing. If you turn to page two. I broke down according to the cities, what each city is doing. The purpose of this is, my point is, we have what we consider in the business field, we have a bleed, B-L-E-E-D. If you take that and turn it into your anatomy of your body, if you walk into the emergency room and you're bleeding everywhere, they're going to work on that bleed. Because when your blood is out, you have nothing. You want to stop the bleed. In the corporate field, we do the same thing. When a CEO comes before a board and they're having trouble financially getting their books to work right, which we are, no one here is going to tell you today that our budget, that our books and our budget is pristine, pretty and perfect. They're not going to say that. If they do, they're going to be challenged every which way but lose. We all have problems with this budget. There's just, we're spending, we're projected to spend more than we're taking in, even though we got all this money coming from the casinos. That means we have a bleed, we have a financial problem somewhere. Which means we have to identify the problem, fix the problem and not pass it to the next person or the next group in hoping they do it. If you look at the revenue for the city of De'Avil, on their property taxes, they have only 5,220,000. Biloxi has 22 million dollars in property taxes. If you look at the next, you have their sales. When I say sales, which means that their net sales, they're getting directly into their coffers, they don't get the whole 7%. What they're getting in their coffers is 10,910,000. They only have 13,399 people in the whole city, citizens. Compared to Biloxi has 48,000 people. And we only bring in 22, 14,000, 14 million dollars in revenue from sales tax. Sales tax for those who are trying to figure it out is when you go to the store and you buy a carton of eggs, gallon of milk, shoes, socks, shirts, clothing items. When you go to the hardware stores and you're buying nails and things like that. Everything that you would need that has that 7% on it, they're getting a piece of it. That's called revenue. That's how they're paying their bills, that's how they're able, with all 30 million dollars worth of casino revenue, they're able to give their people raises. They're able to fix their roads, their parks, the things that we're asking for little signs on our parks. They don't have those problems over there. We're asking for little signs on cutting our grass, they're able to keep their grasses cut. Where is this extra money coming from? If you look at the numbers on page three. Of their 10 million dollars in sales tax revenue, they only have 13,000 people. That equals 814 dollars per person after their 7% is broken down that their city puts into their coffers. That's not true, they're not doing it per person. If you look down further, you'll see Ocean Springs, those numbers look good. Their citizens aren't doing 500 dollars a head, per person, the per capita is per person, their citizenship. If you go down to Gulfport, their citizens are not doing 388. It drops way down below, if you think about it, 388 compared to 814 for De'Avil. Now, we're going to talk about Biloxi. Biloxi has a sales tax of 14 million, I mean, sales tax of 14,881,000. We have 48,000 people here that we have to serve. We only have 309 dollars per person income coming into our coffers. Compared to De'Avil, if you look at those numbers, they're saying they have 814. What's misleading about it is your bleed is the fact that we take our dollars that we need to pay our people, our raises, we need to get to our Police Department, we need to get to our Fire Department, we need to fix our parks, get our signs in our park. We have city councilmen running out here spraying weed killer because we give all our money to another city. The numbers don't lie, they're there, they're telling you that. We, if we don't change or do anything different, this is going to continue to grow and grow and grow. This does not come to a positive end. The reason the budget stinks is because we have a bleed, we are bleeding. I didn't say we're dying, we are bleeding. It is an unhealthy bleed, we have to fix the bleed. I have a question for the mayor. In this budget, are you showing us where you're going to show us how we have to actively, not passively, but directly and actively fix the bleed?
There are actions that more revenue, less revenue, more expenses, less expenses, that we have historically outperformed the budget. Therefore, we always historically saw it with more fund balance than we did as we predicted it the year, like today, what we were predicting for September. That's year after year after year. And one point I wanted to make, this data right here I can make before you. When we talk about wages and salaries, from 2021, that is going up about 10 million dollars. And that's all wages and salaries. So to say that these revenues, and again, a billion dollars worth of revenue always generates about another 50,000 population over the course of the year based on business. It's not without cost that these, the biggest winner out of that 1 billion dollars, that translates to 1220 million dollars a year in taxes that casinos pay, thank goodness for them. But 80% of that 120,000, 120 million dollars, 80 million of it goes directly to the state of Mississippi. 3.76 million of the remnants far goes to Biloxi Public Schools. Another 3.76 million goes to Gulfport, Long Beach, Pashcre, Sheehan, Harrison County. So that's whittling down those things. You know, a number of millions of dollars goes to the county public safety. And so the remnants is shrinking down. That's what, when the, you know, rubber hits the road, we're working on a couple of things in order to service and provide service not only to the citizens but also to our visitors. So I mean, you can't paint a picture without considering the cost of us, you know, supporting the visitors. Now, again, we've done some things to, you know, minimize what we had done in the past. Where when we say freezing, every year, we've actually forecast for the following year a number of vacancies. And that really extorts, you know, really makes it distort the ending balance. But this is, I think is a more accurate picture of how we need to budget. But again, year after year after year for 10 times, this will be the 10th time I'm working on that we always outperform the budget and things happen, again, good and bad. But those adjustments at the beginning of the, we've always been in a better shape at the beginning of this year than we were predicting it at the end of last year. So I think the bleeding, you know, sure can stop and we can do some things. There's a lot of things we did, there's a lot of things that can be done. As far as, over the course of time, we had buildings that are 10 and 20 years old now and things were breaking down, we did the bond work and we did some pretty extensive, you know, upgrades to the facilities like AJ Highway's Park and some of these other things that bond is helping us out and some refinancing of a lot of things like reducing the Sharper Stadium as well as Utility Authority refinancing a bunch, saved us neighborhood of, you know, 300,000 a year. And we take those actions as they appear. And we're anticipating, again, we talked about a 10 million dollar bond, servicing a lot of things this year because we do anticipate a little bit favorable interest rate. And we've been very, you know, very shrewd in what we've done. And that's why we have a double A minus credit rating. The only, only city in Mississippi with a double A S and P, double A credit rating. So that, if you Google them, they'll tell you, that's a strong commitment to meeting financial commitments. And that's it. So we do every day try to put us in a better situation. Not, I don't call it stop the bleeding, but you managed, managed the situation.
Okay, I did not get an answer to my question.
I thought I answered your question, was are we stopping the bleeding? We stop the bleeding every day.
Okay, yeah, let me, let me rephrase it so that we can be clear that we're all talking about the same thing.
Councilman, I'm not going to be going back and forth, so try to make.
No, sir, we're not going back and forth, sir. I do have a floor, I do like to speak. And I gave him an opportunity to answer a question, I have the right to ask a question.
You do, but we're not going to go back and forth several times.
We're not going back and forth.
Make your point, make your point, councilman.
No, that is my point, sir, and he did not answer my question. And I just stated he did not answer my question.
He answered your question, you didn't like his answer. So if you want to rephrase it, go ahead, but let's move on.
Actually, I just said the same thing, let me ask another way.
Yep.
Okay. I was specifically speaking in reference to sales tax.
No, you're specifically speaking about sales tax. You were talking about stopping the bleeding, which is specific. We're talking about, you're talking about sales tax now? Let's talk about sales tax. What do you want to know about sales tax?
Okay, let me go back over again. Okay, we have a bleed. The bleed is simple that we're, we're spending money in De'Avil and other cities because we don't have the retail here. I ask you specifically, sir, what is that you have in this budget to stop that bleed? That's why I went over the numbers, let me finish. I went over the numbers that's showing you the sales tax. All the numbers before I asked you the question was about sales tax. It's working down those sheets, the sheets we went through is about sales tax. So that is a source of revenue. The casinos, we cannot make them do anymore, they're doing good, I appreciate them. We're trying to find revenue for our budget, this is a budget decision, not just a budget decision. This is over a quarter of a billion dollars of citizens' money decision.
Are we talking about sales tax now or are we talking about overall revenue? Tell me what you're talking about.
The question is.
Sales tax is what you began this question for, okay? How do we improve sales tax, is that what you're asking?
How do we get our sales dollars to stay here? Do you have anything in this budget or plan to do that, sir?
Well, get more retail development. Some of the things that already popped up is some of those developments we have like royalties. What do you think that's going to add to the sales tax revenue? Chick-fil-A just out there, those developments are keyed on by infrastructure and some of the things we put in place so you can attract more retail business that does things. And you can look at a lot of opportunities that were missed to De'Avil when it comes to car dealerships. We don't have, we have one car dealership, they have eight, okay? If you talk about bleeding, a lot of, a lot of people buy cars over there. That's one way to stop the bleeding, get four or five more car dealerships here.
So the question was, what are you doing in this budget? What are you showing us that you're going to fix this problem? We are going, we're not increasing our sales revenue the way we need to. What are you doing to get to say, hey, this budget is showing potential?
I just mentioned, I just mentioned the new retail opportunities that we have. You have to do that in order for to generate sales tax revenue. We've been very creative and working with the SMPDD and these other folks in order to enable new businesses to come in and survive. And as far as reputation, if you're a new business, Biloxi has the best reputation around about helping you get these things going. And that's what we're doing. It all generates the services and taxes related to those services. So if you want to call that stop the bleeding, it's not stop the bleeding, it's make a better position for retail development, that will stop what you call the bleeding.
Okay, so basically you're not seeing anything. Okay, all right, next thing. On this bond that we keep talking about, 10 million dollars, do you have any idea, can you explain to me? I'm lost in what we're going to be doing with this. It looks like it's making our budget look a little bit better. But exactly what projects are we all outlining to say where this money is going?
All right, we've got a number of buildings, like the Police Department, the Lopet, the Center, the Public Safety Building, that requires about a 1.3 million dollar roof, is that what it is? We've got about 15 generators that we buy. That is about, I don't know, about 4 million dollars worth of that, okay? That's eating up that 10 million. A number of other things that are multi-year, you don't want to pay for all, you don't buy a house and pay for it in one year. So bottom line, we've spread that cost while borrowing the money and we anticipate pulling it at the right rate in order to minimize that cash flow. Those are the kinds of things that are multi-year trucks, big trucks like dump trucks and vacuum trucks that, you know, you don't expense it all in one year. It's a multi-year, so that's how we estimated that we should spread that cost over multiple years.
So I got, we're going to buy some trucks, we're going to borrow money, we're borrowing money.
That's it?
Okay, because the reason why you borrow money, because you need it, you don't have it. So we're borrowing.
No, it's not because we don't have it, because it's the best way to cash flow it.
Okay, so we're borrowing money to do, you said 1.8 million for one building, so that was.
Number of buildings, number of roofs, the old brick house, Rachel, if you help me out, there's a number of opportunities, but it's all related to multiple year costs to put these things back in operational. But the generators, we hadn't, I guess, replaced generators in a bunch of years. But since Hurricane Katrina, a lot of things are there and we use a lot of money maintaining them. Whereas new things, again, things like fire trucks, we did a little bit of lease situation, but one fire truck that used to cost 500,000, now costs 937,000. So that's what, that was in our estimation of the best way in conjunction with our accounting and some of these other opinions, that this is the best way to do this.
Okay, we're the citizens of Biloxi. I went to a bank to borrow 10 million and I asked somebody to co-sign for me, like sign on with me, read this together. And I gave them that answer, you think that it will still go along with it?
I know, I know why they do pay attention because we got a double A credit rating.
Okay, what kind of credit?
Yeah, you do, yeah, you should do, you should have, that's why we can do this. And you can look at Standard and Poor's and look at these Raymond James, we have about 50 million dollar capacity to borrow.
I understand that, but I'm trying to find out, I'm simply trying to find out what we're going to do with 10 million dollars.
What I just kind of told you, you want to read all of this?
Okay, sir, you brought up the fire trucks, I'm going to skip down to that. Before I do that though, the Singer Theater, the audio video, I'm hearing, I'm hearing we're going to possibly put a million dollars into that for the audio video.
I don't know, I don't know who's telling you that.
Just I want you to tell me so we be clear, I couldn't believe you would do that, so.
Okay, what we're waiting on right now is the Sanger carpet. I think we're 10 weeks out, Rachel, 10 weeks out. Okay, and that's about 70,000. The rest of that 200,000 that we will offset by raising, fundraising will be related to lighting, the stage setup as far as overhead production things, as well as the audio part of it, not the video wall, that could be as much as 200,000, 300,000. But we feel like this will put us in the business very soon, as soon as the carpet's ready, we'll be in the business. And then what? And then whatever additions we put would be offset by fundraising, friends of the Sanger.
Okay, what I'm asking, sir, is are we getting ready, is the city going to have to pay for this million dollar?
Not, no, not intended to.
Sir?
No, fundraising will do whatever's left to what we're doing.
Okay, so this is, we're not, we're not coming out of the budget, this million dollars. You're not going to come back and say we need this million dollars from.
A million, I don't know where you get the million dollars.
Okay, whatever it is, when you say how much?
What's left is this, this audio visual and carpet. That's what's left, then we open the doors.
How much is the audio visual?
We have about 200,000 in that budget already.
It's already in the budget?
It's in the budget, it's in the budget this year.
So you're, the amount of the budget that we're, we're talking about now includes how much for the audio video?
We had, we've got budgeted to do those things that I just mentioned, 200,000.
200,000.
And I think we spent 73 on the carpet. And we haven't spent it yet, but we, we won't spend it.
I'm only asking about the audio visual, that's what I'm asking for.
Yeah, he answered your question. He said 200,000 is in the budget, he doesn't intend to buy any audio visual.
No, he's saying carpet and everything, yes, I'm only asking about one part.
73 of the 200,000 is for carpet. The rest will be pointed towards audio speakers and lights.
Okay, all right. On the, the, she hear about the budget, the, on the proceeds from capitalization. Can you?
That's the 10 million dollars proceeds, 10 million dollars is the proceeds.
I see it for 6.6 million, proceeds from capitalization.
Was that, that was capital projects? For vehicles, is that some of the leases on, yeah, capital leases on the vehicles? Financing for capital leases on vehicles.
We're going to spend 6.6 million dollars just on vehicles, that's all it is? Who's that talking, can she come up here, I need to know?
Yeah.
Can you? Can she come, I need to know?
I see what it is. What do you need, Mr. Marshall?
As we're speaking, I need to explain to me what, you know, the 6.6 million dollars, just trying to just find it out, that's all.
That on our capital leases.
2 million of it is for a ladder truck that was ordered last year and has a 48-month lead time. Another approximately 2 million is for two engine trucks that will be ordered next year. And the difference is for vehicles for the water sewer fund and the general fund.
Okay, so basically for the fire department, we're buying three vehicles?
On order.
One is already on order and the one that will be ordered this year will not arrive for two years. But because the expenses up top, you have to have an offset below because that is intending how we're going to finance or pay for it.
Okay, and we're buying all these fire trucks for what reason again?
For, for.
To replace old.
Right, they have a 10-year, do you want to?
They have anything to do with the ratings?
Yes, sir.
It does?
Yes, sir.
Okay, can you come and explain the ratings to me, please? And that will be on, for those who have the sheets, we're going to page four.
Yes, sir, so what question do you typically have about the rating?
All right, so if we're buying all these fire trucks, that's going to help us to get, what kind of rating?
It's, it's got us currently at a class two rating.
We're class two?
We have the goal to get to a class one, yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes, us and Gulfport are only two cities in the state of Mississippi that are currently at a class two rating.
What's the purpose of getting to that one?
To that one, it is a, it's really, the bigger part of the class one is to sort of sell the city that we provide the highest quality of service to investors in the city, like sales tax revenue, big people who'd want to come in and invest in the city. That's like your bigger cities listed, like Houston, San Antonio, and things that nature, Mobile, it's for that.
Okay, does it, does it, I've been told it's going to help the, lower the rates of insurance, is that true?
It's mostly on the commercial side, for insurance rates.
So the homeowners, going home a two to a one, would it help our insurance at our home?
It'd be minimal to the homeowners.
What do you call minimal?
It's statistically driven, so there's not an exact formula to say they would get this exact amount for a homeowner, but it's mainly to entice business to increase sales tax revenue into the city, promote growth within the city. It's saying that us as a fire department have the infrastructure, personnel and equipment to provide the highest quality of service to the citizens and the investors who may want to come and invest within the city to increase that sales tax revenue.
So the Outerville has a four.
Yes, sir.
And they're bringing in, obviously based on the numbers, they're, they're kicking our button, bringing in business.
Are you, I don't know about, I'm, are you talking about the class rating?
Right.
Talking about business revenue.
Class rating, there's, there's a four.
There, yeah, that's worse than the two.
Huh?
That's worse than the two.
Right, but that's not, it's not slowing them down from bringing in business. We're trying to find out, we spend, we spend a lot of money on fire trucks and we're cutting the police department. We're spending money, we're cutting him, but we are helping the fire department. I want to help them both, which means that why is this city, of all the cities on the Mississippi Gulf Coast having trouble taking care of both of those two departments? But we've got to choose between the two, which one is going to benefit the citizens better. I'm not saying that we don't need them, but we do need them both. And it's embarrassing that with our eight casinos, we had to figure out this conversation, but here we are. The question is, if we spend this 2 million dollars, can you guarantee that we're going to be a one?
No, we can't guarantee.
Okay, if we spend this 2 million dollars, will the homeowners see a significant savings in their insurance?
No, but they'll save it in service.
No, they're saving it in service. Yeah, we're, we're providing higher quality of service to the citizens and the visitors of Biloxi.
So we're not trying to save their money on their insurance? Because I've been always told that we're going to be saving their money on, actually, I heard the mayor say that before too.
We do, we do save, save them money on insurance.
How much is?
As good as it can possibly get.
How much is the difference? If we don't spend 2 million dollars, will it, will it change the numbers?
Yes, as our trucks go out of service and their 20 years of service life expire, we will begin to lose our rating and that will cause an increase in insurance premiums, yes, sir.
So a five to a one, would it make a difference?
Yeah.
To the homeowner?
Yes.
Do you know how much?
No, no, sir, I couldn't give you that exact number. I, I don't know if anybody could give you that.
If we didn't buy those trucks this year, where we took that money, we saved our police department, would it make a difference?
Yes, because it'll push back delivery debts, which will then require trucks that will begin to get out of their service state to begin to depreciate in points allowed by the ratings.
And how are you staffed? We're freezing people, things like that, how are you staffed?
We're, what we're responding, we responded the highest number of people to a call for, for fire alarms and structure fires, everybody in the state of Mississippi.
Okay, all right, so you can't guarantee that we're going to, we spend this 2 million dollars, you can't guarantee it's going to give us the one that we need?
No, we, no, because that's done by a third-party agent, that's done by the ISO rating bureau. Yeah, they had to come in and re-audited us for that.
Okay, okay, so we can't guarantee it, we just take it a chance, 2 million.
I know, it is a guarantee that it will keep our rating at a two and it is a guarantee it'll keep that, it'll keep the insurance ratings down, but there's no guarantee that it'll move you to the first-class one fire department in the state of Mississippi. That is not done by us, that's done by a third-party, the ISO.
Okay, all right, I need to ask the chief of police a question.
Sir?
Okay, are you fully staffed?
No, sir.
So you're short already. Taking 1.9 million dollars from your budget, does that help you or hurt you?
Well, obviously, that's something that's, that's, we don't like, certainly, there have to be some changes made, yes.
So the question was, does that help you or hurt you?
Well, it's not going to help us.
Okay, so if you were able to, as a department, able to go out and do everything you need to do fully, fighting crime, protecting the citizen, would that lower the homeowner's insurance?
I don't think so.
So our homeowner's insurance is not based on what you do?
I don't, if we eliminate crime in Biloxi, I think you'd still, homeowner's insurance may go down some, but I think you're still going to have homeowner's insurance.
I know, I'm not trying to eliminate it, we're trying to help save on the numbers.
I can't, I can't answer that part until we go down.
Okay, so the next step is, we're cutting you 1.9 million, one of the richest cities on the Mississippi Gulf Coast. Are you paying your officers enough?
Well, you know I'm going to say no to that because I think that police officers aren't paid enough anywhere, so my answer to that would be no.
Okay, all right, so I appreciate you, I thank you. I do, I do believe your officers need to be paid more, I don't believe in cutting you. That's, if we're going to cut something, that should be the last thing on our list. Thank you, sir. I have several other things I needed to go over, I'm not going to go over because of, because of time. We're looking at a budget from the richest city on the Mississippi Gulf Coast, the wealthiest, blessed city on the Mississippi Gulf Coast. And we're looking at them, looking at a budget that just became a high harvest. We got one man wearing four and five hats doing harvest work. We have a C A O who was doing, I mean, I thank God for this man, to be honest with you, because he does everything he's supposed to do plus, every time I call him around, he's the man making sure we get the trash picked up. This is the C A O, chief administrative officer. And we're saving money by working him like that because we don't have the staff to do it. We're cutting every city employee in this whole city and we're one of the richest cities on the Mississippi Gulf Coast and we're supposed to be okay with that. I'm not ever going to be okay with that. And if he says you're not going, you're going to freeze, you're going to freeze hiring, that means that if someone is working in a building or in a park and they're already short two or three people and they're already doing the extra work, we're not even paying them enough, then we're also going to go ahead and, and add more work to them for how long? But we don't know how long the hiring freeze is going to last. So with that in mind, I think it's a bad budget. I think it just, the promise that we're going to work on it later and fix it later, we had been fixing all these years. We're going to be serious about it, be serious about it, if you're going to play with it. And I came in with a clean slate, I want to leave with one, sir.
Thank you, anyone else have any comments? All right, the only thing I'd like to add, because councilman asked the question, on average, going from a two to a one, if you Google it, it says it saves about 2% for the homeowner. Okay, appreciate again everybody's hard work. It doesn't stop with passing a budget, I think everybody understands that responsibility. And wherever this goes, we're, we're going to have to roll up our sleeves and do our job. So appreciate the mayor, appreciate all the council members, the directors and all the input that we've received from our community. All in favor? All in favor? Those opposed? Motion carries four to three, next item.
Resolution to deny a request for zoning map, authorize a change in zoning for a parcel of land from R S 10 low-density single-family residential to regional business for 105.3, excuse me, Pennote Drive.
Mr. Shoemaker, the chair will entertain a motion.
And I'll make it.
All right, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Creel, Mr. Shoemaker.
Yes, Director Creel, do you mind just, real quick, if you don't mind, just giving us a, a quick rundown on, on this particular request?
We have a, we have a map, I'd just like to put up, I think it does a great job of explaining it. The property in question is the one in red. Right now, everything that you see on this map is on single-family residential R S 10 and the owner of the property in red was requesting a change to go from R S 10 to R B, which is the most intensive business zoning that we have in order to put in a boat and RV storage facility. We had a number of the neighbors that came out to oppose it and one of the main reasons they were opposing it was because I think they would have had a different approach had they known that it was going to be for the residents there to store their boats, but it's actually putting a commercial operation right in the middle of a single-family neighborhood. And the neighbors were concerned that there'd be people coming from every direction to store their boats there, to store their RV there, you know, creating damage on their roads and those kind of things. So I think the planning commission, they voted unanimously to deny, I think they made the right decision.
That's right, yes. And, and real quick, if I may, and, thank you, Director Creel. And I've said it before up here, and I know the council has a fiscal responsibility for the city, obviously to make money and tax money and to get sensible and smart developments. And however, I do think this project would be, but with that being said, I've had a multitude, probably more so, objection to this particular development than anything since I've been on the council thus far. So with that being said, and, and like Director Creel said, it's, it's one, wanting to put one business in the middle of a huge, huge, huge residential area. And that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, councilman. Are there any other comments on this item? Any other comments? Call for the question, all in favor, oh, excuse me, all in favor of denying. All in favor of denying? All opposed? Anybody abstain? I didn't see everybody's hands, okay. Motion to deny passes unanimous. Next item. Consent, they have a motion on the consent.
I'll move it.
Moved it? Mr. Shoemaker, all right, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Creel, Mr. Shoemaker, you got the floor.
Just a question on H. That's the landscape maintenance for Schucker Stadium. That's $500 and I know it's, I've read it, in certain months of the year we pay, it gets, gets cut every other week. Some months of the year it gets paid weekly. But is that $500 regardless of how many cuts it is? Okay, that's all I have, and thank you.
Thank you.
So on F, is that already budgeted?
It is budgeted and we use, the money actually comes from, from a lease agreement that we had with Harley's at the beginning of the new, at this budget and the Harley's could not be ordered. So we had that money in the budget.
Oh, good, perfect.
So it was for vehicles, it just wasn't actually.
And this is back to earlier, the discussion about getting a truck because cars aren't available, so you just, that, you got to go with.
This one's already outfitted and ready to go.
Perfect, perfect, all right, yes, sir, that's all, thank you.
Any other council members have anything they want to add? Mr. Creel, you got something else?
Question, yes, on I, our favorite contractor. So is this in addition to, did, has, did we just come across saying we needed this or did something occur to where we needed this?
No, we, we realized that it wasn't in the contract for them. This is a casing for the water line and we realized that it wasn't in there and we needed it in there.
Okay.
It wasn't a faulty case, this is what we discovered.
Just trying to throw that salt ball up there, thank you.
All right, thank you. Thank you, councilman, anyone else on my right, any council members have anything else to add? Anyone on my left?
Down here, down here, down here.
All right.
Hey, Jamie, can you come up? I guess you're over this, right? The roof for an auditorium, can you explain what this is? I've been having a lot of phone calls about this, but I want everybody else to understand why we need this.
What item, what item is it?
Huh?
What item?
E.
Okay.
Roof on an auditorium.
Right, that was, that was one that was previously submitted to the council a few weeks back, but when it came down to it, the contractor who submitted the bid mistakenly left some things out of that. left some things out of that, and so in order to get a apples-to-apples kind of quote, we put it back, put it, coordinated with engineering and had them assist with us looking at the quotes to make sure that we were comparing the apples-to-apples, and this company was the lowest once we got the second bid, so it was something that we were going with, and it is, and I guess to answer your question, Councilman, it's, it's the roof over our pump room, which encases all of our plumbing, heaters, filters at the auditorium, and over the years, you know, chlorine is harsh on a facility, and the metal roof, I don't think it's ever been replaced since it was put in back in the eighties, so it's something that we really need to take care of, and then, you know, future, there will be another where a tree hit the roof that we got quotes on to get repaired as well.
Right, I just wanted everybody to understand why that was in there.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Councilman. Anyone else on my left have anything? Mr. Nail?
On C, we only have two items that we're going to auction off. I know, I know in the future you said that we're gonna have a lot of, lot of things on there, but I was thinking, all the trucks that we have sitting out there just parked and idled, don't we have to pay like tags and insurance, and they're not even being used?
Tagged, if there's surplus out of there and no one's using them, then we're not doing this. Insurance, we're self-insured anyway from those. Those are things, as you and I discussed earlier, we're gonna go in and do a citywide sweep of all the surplus property. I've already talked with Chief Miller on those, and we're gonna take a look, a hard look at what we've got out there, and also at public works, of moving those items and getting those surplus and getting them out of here.
So next time, we'll have a whole list of stuff, not just two?
Yes, that's the game plan.
Okay.
Multiple times during the year, too, so that was the reason why we did this. We don't have to do it all at one time like we used to do, assemble it and then call everybody, so it's a way.
I still say a public auction, you get more money.
I'm surprised you didn't buy these.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nail. Anyone else? Any items on the consent? Alright, I'll call for the question, then I'll ask for the exceptions. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Any exceptions? Mr. Gray? Mr. Marshall? Mr. Nail? Mr. Creel?
No exceptions.
Mr. Tisdale?
I'm voting no on A and B.
A and B.
That's it, thank you, thank you, Mr. Gray.
Thank you, Mr. Tisdale, Mr. Shoemaker.
No exceptions.
Alright, those are the exceptions. We'll go ahead and open up code enforcement hearings, Mr. Creel.
Item A on the agenda, Sherri Jones, 535 Payton Drive, that case has been resolved. Item B, M A S Limited LLC, 202 Veterans Avenue, that case has been resolved. Item C, Mitchell and Associates Inc., 211 McDonald Avenue, that case has been resolved. Item D, Rushmore Edgewater Exchange et al., 2650 Beach Boulevard. This property's still in violation, but we'd like to ask for an extension till October 20th, I'm sorry.
Chair, entertain a motion for an extension till October when?
28th.
29th.
8th.
Do I have a motion?
Question.
Question by Mr. Creel.
So, how long, excuse me, how long's it been in fraction?
I talked with Monty Luffy today, he manages the Edgewater Village, and what it is, is that they had the new furniture store that moved in there, and they're trying to work with a furniture store to get this under control. They do have some overgrowth there, but the main thing is the boxes that the furniture comes in, they're just not adequately, don't have a dumpster there to take care of it, but he assured me if we would grant him an extension, they'd take care of it.
Okay, and it's thirty, is it thirty days, is that what you get?
Over thirty days, yes, sir.
Alright, Mr. Tisdale?
Jerry, 2650, is that Edgewater Village?
Edgewater Village, yes, sir.
Okay, so this is, this is that service alley behind Edgewater Village, okay, and then that, the grassy spot on the, on the left photo, that's to the west?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you, that's all, thanks.
Alright, Chair, entertain a motion to grant an extension till the 29th of October?
As I move.
Moved by Mr. Tisdale, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Shoemaker. Any discussion?
Yes. Is this on this?
Mr. Gray?
This is, so they, they need a new dumpster, is that what they need?
No, it looks like they need a larger dumpster, or another dumpster there. Again, Monty told me that this is specifically for the furniture company that just moved into the middle of Edgewater Village, and everything that they get comes in boxes, so he's working with them to try to get this resolved.
Yeah, I mean, I don't see where they need over thirty days to get a new dumpster. They should be able to call a company and get it out. I can't support this now.
Okay. Alright, any other comments?
President Glavine? It was the 28th, not the 20th.
28th?
Yes, sir.
Alright, 28th, more or less, 28th.
You know where they can get a dumpster? Wayne? Oh, just checking.
Alright. Call for the question, all in favor granting the extension to the 28th? Opposed? Motion carries six to one.
Item E, T L G F Y LLC, 384 Park Avenue, this property's still in violation.
Is there anyone here to speak on behalf of T L G F Y LLC, 384 Park Drive? There being no one, this case is closed.
Item F, Betty Porticius Estate, 358 Lee Street, that case has been resolved. Item G, Salt Ridge Capital LLC, 222 Benaki Avenue, that case has been resolved. Item H, Ewan and Zan Nguyen, 360 Lee Street, that case has been resolved. Item I, Dan Wong, 351 Holly Street, that case has been resolved. Item J, Larry Jones Jr., Zero Hudson Crone Road, we're asking for an extension here till September the 23rd, which is the next meeting.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Second by Mr. Tisdale. I have no other discussion. Any additional discussion? There being none, call for the question to grant the extension, all in favor? Those opposed? Motion carries. Next item.
Item K, Brandy Ann Broaddus, 316 Santini Street, that case has been resolved. Item L, Sidney Roy Langson Estate, 333 East Drive, that case has been resolved. Item M, Michael Peter Rosick, 816 Lackland Drive, this property's still in violation.
Is there anyone here to speak on behalf of Michael Peter Rosick, 816 Lackland Drive? Lackland Drive?
Great street.
It's a great street, Mr. Creel.
I reside on that street.
Alright. There being no one, this case is closed.
Item N, Nadine Gentless, 220 Strangie Avenue, that case has been resolved. Item O, Lick Ven and Thu Hua Don, 1215 Lee Street, that case has been resolved. Item P, Ewan and Zan Nguyen, 380 Lee Street, that case has been resolved. Item Q, Loxicon LLC, 610 Howard Avenue, this property's still in violation. This is the case that the lady spoke of earlier in the meeting. What's happened is, this is a vacant lot directly behind her house, you can see that the furniture here in the front is actually her backyard, and the owners of that adjacent property came in and built a structure right down her property line, and they're storing crab traps there next to it, so certainly this meets the definition of public nuisance, unsanitary conditions, and that's why we're bringing it to the council.
Is there anyone here to speak on behalf of Loxicon LLC? 610 Howard Avenue, if you would come on up? You'd state your name, address for the record?
Address is 610 Howard Avenue.
Would you like to speak on what's going on here?
So, I was just helping local oyster farmer, try to have somewhere where he can conduct business and store his oyster equipment. We have started making some improvements. At first, it was just everywhere. We know it's, doesn't look good from the city. I don't wanna, you know, be a burden on the city or anybody driving past and seeing a bunch of oyster traps, or oyster crates. So we started building the cages, if we need to move them off and put a privacy fence, just looking for a little guidance on what we can do so you can continue to conduct business and store his oyster cages, so we can.
Mr. Creel, would you be amicable to discuss this a little bit further, to see if they could relocate these oyster cages?
First of all, the property's not zoned for what they're using it for. That's the first violation involved. They put in a structure without a permit, it doesn't meet the setback requirements, so realistically, this shouldn't even be happening on this piece of property.
Is there any, could they move it to another part on this property, or that's not an option?
It's just not zoned.
Alright, so how much time do you have to relocate, remove these, these cages, so you'll be in compliance?
What does it take to rezone? What is it gonna take to maintain the property?
That'll be a whole different ballgame, I don't think you have enough, you'll have to relocate whatever's on there, then you'd have to request rezoning, I don't even know if, if that would be even possible.
Gotcha.
But you're gonna have to remove them, or you're gonna be cited, and they'll be removed for you, and that expense will be tacked on to the property.
So no storing of any type of marine equipment, is that what it is, or what's?
It'd have to be a home, or some kind of?
Like a metal building?
Cannot have an accessory structure on a piece of property unless you have a principal structure there, meaning that you can't build a shed or a holding facility unless there's a house on that property. Even if there were a house on this property, what's being done there would, would not meet the zoning, the zoning prohibits it.
Speaking to the microphone? Alright, Mr. Tisdale?
You know, the old saying in Biloxi, when they had oyster shell roads, even though they smelled the high heaven in the summer, folks remember, that's the smell of money. It's no longer the smell of money. That, that being the case, I'm assuming wherever this might be located, there's gonna be an odor, it's gonna draw rodents, apparently, so you've gotta find a zone where that is a reasonable factor, or where that's considered. I would, and I'm no zoning expert, but Mr. Jones, this man right here is a zoning expert, and he could give you better options and what's possible than any of us up here. So that being the case, I mean, he'll work with you as much as he can, but zoning's gonna be an issue, as, as well as a few other factors, he's familiar with them all. Thank you.
Is there, is there any, does anyone wanna make a motion to give some kind of reasonable time for them to remove these items? How long, how long would it take you to remove and relocate these items to, to an area where it's legal? How long? You're gonna have to give me a time, I can't give you unlimited time. Chair, entertain a motion if.
I'll make that motion for thirty days.
Alright, Mr. Tisdale, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Shoemaker. Good luck, we wanna help you out, but we gotta be respectful of our zoning and the neighbors in that neighborhood that depend on us adhering to those zoning laws. Alright, all in favor? I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, that's what I was asking.
Okay, all in favor? Opposed? Motion carries thirty days.
Item R, Kathleen B. Harrison, 182 Azalea Drive, that case has been resolved. Item S, Mary Bell Hutchinson, 338 Maple Street, this property's still in violation.
Is there anyone here to speak on behalf of Maybell Hutchinson, 338 Maple Street? There being no one, this case is closed.
I do have a question, before we close out. Mr. Creel, Jerry, Jerry Creel, Mr. Creel. I, I spazzed out a little bit, but on A, what happened on that?
So, A was resolved. I went by there this morning, and they were finishing up the weed eating on it. The only thing we had them cited for was overgrowth, and the guys were still out there weed eating, and they got it all cut, so they resolved the issue that we had cited them for.
Okay, have you talked to the neighbor, see what the issues are?
Uh, no, sir. We do know that on one corner of the house, there's some damage there that needs to be repaired. They did pull a building permit six months ago, and nothing has been done, so we'll, we'll pursue that now.
Okay, just wanted to make sure that, you know, it was, it was getting resolved. I did get some calls about that one. Thank you, sir.
Well, I got a question on that same property.
Alright, gentlemen, I just wanna point out, I'll give some leeway, but in the future, once we've closed our agenda, we're gonna move on, but we'll go ahead and give you some leeway there.
The, the windows on there, I mean, they're not fitting in, I mean, it's, what, what can we do about that? I mean, it's a, it's a nuisance to the neighborhood. I've got calls, I know Mr. Marshall's got calls.
Are you saying the windows are kinda out of scale with the rest of the house?
They don't fit in the, in the hole.
Yeah, that, that'll be what we'll pursue the next time. If there's a, a place where rodents, or raccoons, or whatever can get inside of there, we'll, we'll address that.
Alright, yeah, sorry about that, Mr.
No, you're good, I'm just trying to make sure we move along smoothly. Chair, entertain a motion to, for the routine?
As I move.
Moved by Mr. Tisdale?
Second.
Second by Mr. Creel and Mr. Tisdale.
I don't have a question, thank you. Well, I will, I got a question first on, I guess it's Section 3B. Did we figure out who owns this property? I know it was at the last, the Baptist Church was saying they didn't own it, and if I'm not mistaken, at the last code enforcement, there was a question where the Baptist Church was questioning ownership.
We got, we got David Wheeler working on that, to find out who owns it.
So do we, do we vote on, to assess that assessment until we get that ruling back, or how does that, I don't know how that works?
So if I understand, these were on the code enforcement, and then it moves to the routine, so you can take the appropriate action?
That's correct.
To, whatever we voted to clean it up, or what have you.
Yes, sir.
It's just a formality here.
Yeah, but then we're gonna, we're gonna do a special assessment, but we don't know who the owner is to assess, is that?
Those assessments go on automatically. They, they are determined by, by code enforcement.
It goes on to the owner.
It'll be on the parcel.
On the parcel.
Yep.
But if we don't know who owns it, who?
Eventually, somebody will claim the parcel, or it will get transferred or sold, and at that time at the closing, they'll, they'll pay for that assessment.
Yep.
Perfect, thank you.
Oh, good question.
Oh, oh, no, no, I'm good, I'm good, I was looking for Hurricane Katrina Walt, Mr. Rhodey.
Good afternoon, counsel.
Hey, how we doing?
Yeah, good.
Oh, I'm sorry, so how much money?
Apparently, we have $751.70 in the Mississippi PA website, that's in step three of five. Been there fourteen days, which is getting kinda long. That's, step three of five is where the governor's authorized representative for M E M A approves the funding, so it starts moving down towards us. I did call M E M A, our point of contact here in Biloxi last week, and asked him to run it up his chain of command to up through to the G A R, to get those funds moving. They haven't moved as of meeting. We have another conference call with them this Thursday, and I'll be bringing it up again. There's a transition going on right now, the G A R, which is the second in command of M E M A, he's retiring, there's a new one coming on, maybe it's a transition issue, maybe they're just busy, but it will be brought up again.
Sir?
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Mr. Nail?
Hey, I was gonna ask you something, Walt. So when we did, when we did the extension on to Knee Case Brothers for Camellia Street, when is there, when is there supposed to be through with that?
Well, what we actually did, Councilman, if you remember, we did a, a weather.
A weather?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, for the entire project. And we, and I mentioned at that time that we're going to come back to the administration with an extension for Camellia Street in Southern due to the design issues that were out there. We are going to recommend 45 days. If council approves, that 45 days and the project end date will be November, I believe it's the 26th, I have to do my math on it, but I believe it was discussing with my staff this morning, and I believe it's going to be about November 26th, around that timeframe. Well, it's a calendar day contract, so they can work seven days a week.
I don't think they work no way, no days a week right now over there. Never there. You can see a little bit, they do, and then you go back and they're gone. Well, they must be doing it at night.
Somebody, we'll.
Mr. Sebastian would let you know if they were doing that. They're not.
It's, it'll be coming up on them, they've got some.
All right. So we're 60 days ahead, is that not right?
No, sir, not at this time, because MEMA has to press that button, GAR.
With that, that will keep us 60 days ahead with that 650, is that not right?
Yes.
Okay, that's all we need. Thank you.
All right, gentlemen, and Mr. Tisdale has?
Well, okay.
Got another question?
No.
All right, gentlemen, this is a routine agenda. We need to stick to the routine business. However, since we deviated a little bit, let's, let's continue for a second or two.
So on the, on the contract extension, proposed contract extension, that Camellia Street is part of BEA 123?
Yes, sir.
Correct. So the revised completion date for BEA 123 is somewhere mid-October.
Correct.
That was the latest.
Right now, it's October 12th because of the weather days. And when we come with the recommendation to add 45 days, it'll push it out till late November for the entire project.
Let me jump into at this point. There was digital engineering, we had some discrepancies on what was supposed to be versus what was done on Highway 90, and that's the genesis of this, this discrepancy.
That's correct.
I guess, and I think you answered my question, Walt, from understanding you probably, when we do that extension, if we do the extension for Camellia Street, that extends the revised completion date all across the project, not just for that section involving Camellia Street.
Yes, sir, because, so they, the crews that they would use to work to finish Camellia, they are working elsewhere right now.
I'm sure.
Somewhere. And they will need that crew to go over there and do Camellia Street. So we look at it as, for the entirety of the project and not just one area, which is BEA 3.
So that would, so that would affect the paving for Beauvoir Road, Eisenhower Drive, all those, all those lateral streets, if that's a correct term, into Highway 90?
Yes, sir. As far as the time for them to do it, yes, sir. But there's nothing that is stopping them from doing it.
Right. They could complete it before then, they just have to be done by then.
Yes, sir.
Okay, it's just, I know Beauvoir Road, as you know, came up at the board meeting last night. All right, thank you.
Yes, sir.
All right, I'll continue. Any, Mr. Schumaker, any out-of-order discussion you'd like to have?
None.